Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to July's council meeting. Committee of the whole is moved by Council Karen, second by Council Hunter. Be it resolved that the council agenda is presented on July 15, 2025, be approved as circulated. All in favor, please vote. Matt Carries, thank you. It's moved by Council Johnston, second by Council Jorgensen. Be it resolved the next portion of the meeting be closed to the public in order to consider a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board. Please vote. And Matt Carries, thank you. And we will be back in regular session at 3:00.
Good afternoon and welcome back. We did have a closed session earlier and we can expect to see something come out of those discussions later on the council agenda. Council, I need a motion to adopt the Committee of the Whole Agenda as amended as we are adding a counselor update from Counselor Hunter on the Art Advisory Committee. So please vote on that. It's moved by Counselor Karen, seconded by Counselor Hunter. Be it resolved that the Committee of the Whole Agenda of July 15, 2025 be approved as amended. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest in Committee of the Whole? Okay, seeing none. Counselor Strength, please deliver the land acknowledgement statement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We would like to begin today's meeting by acknowledging the First Peoples who, for thousands of years before us, were and are still the keepers and caretakers of this land where we now live and work, and in particular, the Chipewas of Rama, Wata Mohawk First Nations, and the Moon River Métis. We are dedicated to honoring Indigenous history and culture and committed to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect with all First Nation, Métis, and Inuit people. We recognize all the generations of Indigenous people and their historic connection to this place, and we are grateful for the opportunity to gather here at this time. Migwich.
Thank you for that, Counselor Strength. First off, on our agenda today, we have a deputation, so I will invite Sean McCauley and Mark Turney from Fishhook Lane Cottageers Association to come up to the podium and discuss road easement agreement. Welcome. And I will remind you, you do have 10 minutes, and you'll see that little clock in the corner.
Great.
Countdown clock, so there won't be any awkward moments when your time is...
All right.
Go ahead.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to the Town Council for having us here today so that we can talk about Fishhook Lane Cottageers Association and Fishhook Lane. But before we get into our presentation, I thought I'd give you a visual overview. So this is from the Towns' GeoHub website. You can see Gravenhurst up in the top right-hand corner, or a bit of it. If you look down where there's that little blue bar, that's where the Fishhook Lane is sitting on top of the road allowance of the town. And so the actual lane is a little bit longer than that, but that's the part that's on Fishhook Lane, or on the Towns' road allowance, rather. This is a beautiful picture of lovely Muldrew Lake, which is what Fishhook Lane services, and this is the entryway to Fishhook Lane where the start of the Towns' road allowance is for the road. So today, you have two of the six board members from the Fishhook Lane Cottageers Association. Myself, I'm Sean McCauley. I'm the treasurer. I've been on the road for 10 years. With me is Mark Turney. He's been on the road for 30 years almost, and he's our road manager. And the reason why we're here is because our current license of occupation is expiring right now. And when we went to go to renew, some of the rules have changed, so we've done renewals in the past, but now with these new rules in place, if your road is beyond 300, or if portions of your road are beyond 300 meters from the municipal... if portions of your road are beyond 300 meters from the municipal roadway, then you can't do one of these license of occupation renewals. So we said, okay, well, how about if you, if we tried to purchase the road? And in discussions with the town, they said, you know, we would normally consider that, but because the town road allowance also goes to water, then you can't consider it. And so if you think about that chart that I showed on the prior page, is a blue bar, and that's where it's on top of the town road allowance, but after that, the actual town road allowance extends out into the lake, and so therefore, we can't purchase it. So the only option really is for us to do a road easement agreement with the town. And before we get into the rest of the presentation, I just want to say, without access to the road allowance, one of our member properties would have zero access. They would not be able to reach their cottage, or actually, it's a full-time residence. And the other remaining 25, so there's 26 properties, the other remaining 25 would be only water access. So if we cut this off, then we're all kind of out of luck. And so I've got up on the screen our request, so I'll mention it now and I'll mention it again later, but basically, the Fishhook Lane Cottageers Association would like to formally request of the most esteemed council, you know, to direct the Director of Infrastructure Services, Andrew Stacy, to work with the Fishhook Lane Cottageers Association to enter into a road easement agreement with the Fishhook Lane Cottageers Association and the town to use the road allowance where Fishhook Lane currently resides. With that, I'll turn it over to Mark.
So, so thank you again for your time today. You'll see that I'm just going to give you a little bit of an update on the, with the road. It's currently about approximately three kilometers in length, and we've been operating under the license of occupancy for about 30 years. 26 properties, as Sean mentioned, are on the, are members of the road association. Four of them are full-time members, and 13, 13 of the, of the members share, use the road all, all year round, through winter, summer, spring, fall. 70% of the people have been in the fam, have, or in the family, have had properties on for 10 years or more, and 60%, 20 years or more. Personally, I've been there about 25 years. Of the 14 original families, there's still, there's, of the original road, road association members, all 14 are still present. So what we do as the association, the Cottage Association, we maintain and manage the road, including insurance, as well as the actual physical properties of the road. Okay? Good, thank you.
All right, so we'll give you an update on, on where things stand right now. So we've had numerous calls and email correspondence, as well as an in-person meeting already with Andrew Stacy, Director of Infrastructure Services, and Jennifer Kyle, the Administrative Coordinator for Infrastructure Services. So we really appreciate their time and effort on this. Similarly, we've also spent time with Michelle Robinson, so we really appreciate her time as, you know, Ward Three Counselor is a, is a busy job, so, you know, we, we appreciate the attention that we're getting to this matter. And just to give you an update of what's happened at the Fishhook Lane Annual General Meeting, so we regularly have one every year. It's in, at the end of June or the beginning of July. We had one on June 28, 2025. And at that, at that meeting, we went through a similar kind of presentation to get everyone up to speed. And at that meeting, we got unanimous approval from all the members to work with the town to enter into a road easement agreement between the town and us. And, you know, just so that everyone understands that we understand, we realize that it will take some time to get this done, maybe a year, maybe a little more, maybe a little bit less. We also know that we're going to cover any reasonable out-of-pocket expenses of the town, probably just legal fees, when trying to finalize the road easement agreement. And so that really wasn't any problem for us. We're a well-organized entity which has strong financial controls and a good capital budgeting process, and so I just swapped some things into our capital budgeting process, and this is now a line item for that. We also further understand that this is a permanent solution to get deeded access-on-tidal rather than the 10-year renewal process that we previously experienced. And so this is really a silver lining, and everyone actually at the road is quite excited about this, because I know when I bought our place, or when my wife and I bought our place 10 years ago, you know, our lawyers were asking about, you know, what's the status in the road? You don't have any deeded access? How's this going to work? And you had to kind of just roll the dice. And I know that any of the subsequent purchasers also feel the same way, and their lawyers feel the same way, because they come to me to ask about what the status of the road is. So we're really interested in getting this done, and, you know, that's, that's where things stand. And so just to wrap things up, I'll go back to what we talked about at the beginning. Our request is the Fishhook Lane Cottageers Association would like to formally request of the esteemed council to direct the Director of Infrastructure Services, Andrew Stacy, to work with the Fishhook Lane Cottageers Association to enter into a road easement agreement between the Fishhook Lane Cottageers Association and the town to use the road allowance where Fishhook Lane currently resides. Thank you.
Okay. I think you had some time to spare, but thanks for your presentation. I appreciate you working ahead of, of this presentation with staff, and it's nice when people come prepared and know exactly, and we know exactly what the request is, which is why Counselor Robinson has worked with the clerk to prepare something ahead of time, so the clerk is aware. But I will ask of council, is there any questions for the deputants? Counselor Robinson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for your deputation. It was great. I have been working with them, and I've worked, working with Director Stacy, and I support this fully, and I hope it goes forward. And yeah, I agree to hopefully work with Mr. Stacy. Thanks.
And anybody else have any questions? So I just do have a question before we put the motion on the table. You are aware of this motion, Director, and, you know, have an idea of how we're going to move forward with this?
Through you, Worship, absolutely. We, we've talked pretty ad nauseam about this and figured out the best approach forward. I, I do have previous direction from, from council for other cottage associations, cottage associations that requested the same, so we, we do have a bit of a process here, and this committee will recall a report that I brought forward in 2023 specifically about unopened road allowances. And in that report was a reference to this is the type of thing we should be trying to do, is entering into formalized agreements with our, our cottage association friends. So it's a good news story.
Great. We love those. Okay, so if there's no more questions, I do have a motion. It's moved by Counselor Robinson and seconded by Counselor Morphy. I have to read it from here, sorry. Be it resolved the deputation from the Fishhook Lane Cottageers Association, FHLC, regarding road easement agreement be received, and that the Town of Gravenhurst enter into a road allowance use agreement with the Fishhook Lane Cottage Association for the purpose of allowing permanent access over the unopened, unmaintained portion of Fishhook Lane, and that the FHLC be notified that by entering into a road allowance use agreement, this does not obligate the municipality to maintain or assume maintenance of the unopened road allowance, and that municipal services be provided by the Town of Gravenhurst only where the right-of-way meets open publicly maintained roads, and that the FHLC have fully respond, have full responsibility to maintain and keep the traveled roads in suitable condition for emergency vehicle access, and that the FHLC indemnify and release the town from any and all liability associated with the use of the unopened road allowance, and that the FHLC provide a certificate of insurance on an annual basis naming the town as additionally insured in the amount of $5 million, and that the final form and content of the road allowance use agreement be to the satisfaction of the Director of Infrastructure and the Chief Administrative Officer. And finally, that all costs associated with the agreement be borne by the applicant. So I don't think any surprise is there, so... Counsel, are there any other questions before I call the question? Counselor Jorgensen, use your light, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Worship. Just a question about public access, that, as you said, the road allowance leads directly to South Muldrew Lake, and I'm wondering, what is the access like there? Is it, is it somewhere where the public could be using it, or is it, as we've seen many places, a rock cliff or something like that? And would the public be allowed to access South Muldrew Lake off the remainder?
The, the road is maintained not to the lake, actually, not to the lake, so from probably, I would say, 50 meters, it's...
Maybe more.
It may be 50 meters, maybe more, it's, it's bush and, and marsh. So somebody could walk through that if they chose to?
There's no path.
No, no path, no path whatsoever, but they could get to that point, whatever.
Further to that, then, so, so would the public, although it doesn't appear to be being used now, would the public be able to still access it if they chose to, you know, bring a canoe or something?
Yes, yes.
To park reasonably, of course. Okay.
Well, there, there wouldn't be any place to park.
Well, that's the other...
There's no place, there's no place to park, but if they walked down the road with a canoe, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Which is exactly why we don't sell them. So, anybody else? Okay, so there is a question on the table. Okay, and that carries. Thank you. Thanks for coming in today. Okay. It is moved by Counselor Johnston, seconded by Counselor Jorgensen, be it resolved that the following consent agenda items be approved. Minutes, Community Grants Committee, January 13, 2025. Minutes, Community Grants Committee, January 27, 2025. Minutes, Gravenhurst Emergency Management Program Committee, February 19, 2025. Minutes, Gravenhurst Trails Committee, April 10, 2025. Minutes, Gravenhurst Public Library, May 8, 2025. Minutes, Accessibility Advisory Committee, May 15, 2025. Report 2024, capital year-end. Report 2024, annual reserve and reserve funds. Report Integrity Commissioner, annual report. Report Amendment to Schedule A of the Administrative Monetary Penalty System. Counsel, does anybody have any appetite to pull those? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you, Worship. I, I would like to have report number eight pulled, just, I want to speak to it ever so briefly, but I would like to... Thank you.
Okay, you beat Counselor Jorgensen to the punch on that one. Okay, anybody else? Okay, so we will put number eight on new business? All right, so all in favor of the others? And that carries. Okay, so recommendations of advisory subcommittees. Counselor Robinson, Community Awards Committee. Community Awards Committee Terms of Reference Update. Whereas the Community Awards Committee passed a motion at its meeting on June 15, 2025 that requested council approved an amendment to subcommittee's meeting frequency and its terms of reference, therefore, be it resolved that Section 6.1 of the Community Awards Committee Terms of Reference be amended as follows. The Community Awards Committee shall meet on the second Monday of the month in the designated event year, beginning in September and ending in November, with ad hoc meetings to be scheduled as required. Okay, so I will go over to Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So what we're asking, we met in June, the Community Spirit Awards Committee, is we'd like to have more meetings. We didn't feel that we had enough. We meet again in September, so we didn't think we'd have enough before our celebration in November. So we're, really what we're asking is for more meetings to be added, and we needed to go through council. We have a lot to celebrate and a lot of great people in Gravenhurst, so we want to take that time and make this a great celebration. So I'll leave it there, and if there's anything else, Director Patterson's here.
Okay. And, and sorry, that was moved by Counselor Robinson and seconded by Counselor Strength? Or Morphy? Sorry, I don't have it here. Counsel, are there any questions? Okay, seeing none? Okay, thank you. Second update. It is moved by Counselor Varney, seconded by, seconded or by, I'll go to Counselor Strength. Whereas the Accessibility Advisory Committee included a review of accessible features for the town to help eliminate barriers for the residents and visitors of Gravenhurst as part of their 2025 work plan, and whereas a working group of the Accessibility Committee has, after research and evaluation, developed a pilot project utilizing wave-finding technology via smartphone application, and whereas the Accessibility Advisory Committee has endorsed the pilot project, the accessibility, accessible, pardon me, wave-finding pilot project at its meeting on June 19, 2025, therefore, be it resolved that committee direct administration provide a report that further provide, further details of the pilot project for the next committee of the whole meeting on August 12, 2025, including available funding opportunities. Okay, Counselor Varney?
Thank you through you, Madam Mayor. This is rather an exciting venture, I feel. Following council's direction to the Accessibility Advisory Committee in December 2024 to explore new accessible features in the town, the subcommittee began researching potential initiatives to help eliminate barriers for both residents and visitors. After four months of discussion, research, and review, the Accessibility Advisory Committee passed a motion at its June 19 meeting to endorse the launch of a transformative initiative, the Accessible Wave-Finding Pilot Project. This pilot project aims to implement a GPS navigation app in the publicly accessible areas of the Gravenhurst Municipal Office that is specifically designed to support individuals who are blind or deaf or partially sighted. The goal is to enhance mobility and independence by enabling users to navigate with greater ease and confidence. If approved and successfully implemented, this pilot could serve as a model for expanding the wave-finding solution to other key locations across town, both indoors, such as the Opera House and Centennial Center, and outdoors, such as the Muskoka Wharf. The motion before council will direct staff to provide the necessary details regarding the pilot project, the proposed wave-finding technology, and potential funding sources. On behalf of the Accessibility Advisory Committee, thank you for considering this exciting and inclusive initiative. I, along with the subcommittee's staff liaison, Jonathan Gilston, would be pleased to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay, so, thank you for that. Counsel, are there any questions? Counsel, are there any questions for Counselor Varney or for Mr. Gilston? Counselor Morphy?
Thank you, Your Worship, through you. Can you give me an idea of exactly what it looks like? Do they come to the town offices? It made it sound like they have to come to the town.
Yeah, sorry, you just have to use your microphone, Counselor Varney.
Jonathan, do you want to answer that question, please?
Absolutely, Counselor. Through Your Worship, how it generally works is depending on the app that is utilized for navigation, it would provide the user from being able to enter the, in this case, the municipal office, and know where exactly they are and where they want to navigate to. So in the case of they enter our municipal office, they'll be able to know to the right is Building Department, to the left is the other departments they would may want to address or go to. So the idea is really, because navigation app works very well outside, but in order to tailor the navigation app to our infrastructure or our facilities, we need to actually put in what's called beacons within the town to be able to provide that key information for what they are or where they are, they'd like to actually go to within the facility.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you, Your Worship. Not so much a question as a comment. It behooves me to say this. I'm so proud of the committee and staff for doing this. This is going to be a role model for municipalities in Ontario. And the remark that I'll end with is this, I speak of this often. The mark of a civilization is how we treat the most disadvantaged, the less advantaged people. And this is a classic example. I'm just, I'm so proud of the committee and staff and this council for this. So thank you for that. Thank you, Your Worship.
It's not passed yet. I'm just teasing. Counselor Strength?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. You almost make me cry, Counselor Johnson.
That was the intent.
Oh, good. So are we, my question, I guess, through you, Madam Mayor, to Mr. Gilston, are we blazing a trail? Are there any other communities that have this, this app already? I love the, I love the whole concept because we've seen that the Demand Responsive Transit System app at the district has like exploded positively. So I'm hoping that this is going to like, you know, set, set Gravenhurst in a, some kind of a race by itself.
Through the Chair. So from my research I committed to last December, there are not many communities in and around us that actually have, if not any, that have this particular app or system in place, though reaching out to the CNAB, who provide a great amount of detail and information to us, they actually do help municipalities to implement this app or a particular app for their municipality and where they would want to go. But in terms of, say for example, Muskoka, we would be the first and a trailblazer in this case.
That's great. Anybody else? Counselor Varney?
Through you, Madam Mayor. And I think, I think the reason that we think this is so exciting is, of course, we think about Braille, which I think we were talking about at the last time accessibility came to counsel regarding the art installation down at the bay. Well, that's all very fine, but if somebody can't get over to actually get to that spot where there is Braille, this app will make it so much easier for anybody to consider the art installations or help with directions in the, within the town. The next thing I think that the city is talking about is there's buttons by traffic lights to tell you what street you're on, what's the crossing street, what, what corner you're on. So I think accessibility is a long way to go, but I think Gravenhurst is starting and we're starting well. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, no, very exciting. I think, you know, any improvements are always, are always good, and it's great to be a trailblazer. So with that, I will call the question. All in favor? And that did pass, so. 2024 Operating Year End, report number FIN 2025-11. Be it resolved that report number FIN 2025-11, RE 2024 Operating Year End be received for information and that the 2024 operating deficit of $440,283, which is 2% of the 2024 operating budget, subject to final auditing adjustments, be funded from the Tax Stabilization Reserve effective December 31st, 2024. So no big surprises here, but Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. So I'll just be very brief. I'll give you an overview of the 2024 operating financial performance. So as the report indicated, we ended with a, it's an unaudited surplus of $441,000, and that was primarily driven by the snow event. Of course, we are, we are basically recommending that the deficit be financed, funded from the Tax Stabilization Reserve Fund. And of course, that, that fund is primarily, was primarily established to deal with shocks like these of this nature. So thankfully, we have our, we have a healthy enough reserve fund to deal with these unanticipated shocks. So that being said, we're just bringing this report forward to, just to say to counsel that, you know, this is where we are at at the, at the end of 2024, and the, we're asking that it be, the approval from counsel to have that be funded from the Tax Stabilization Reserve Fund. That's it for now, so if you have any questions, you can shoot. Thanks.
Okay, Counsel, are there any questions? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you, Your Worship, through you. Thank you for the report, Mr. Treasurer. You used the word about the Tax Stabilization Fund for unexpected shocks. And that's, that's for the most part, in my career with the ministry, that's what they're for. This is an aberration, but my, my, my point is that climate-related shocks are not going to be shocks anymore. This, and it's noted in the report, these sorts of risks are going to occur more and more, I'm afraid. And so I also just want to confirm with you, sir, that it, I think it did say in the report that you and your staff are going to look at financial other parameters to deal with something like this, rather than using the Tax Stabilization Reserve, which I will make comment on when we get to that point in the agenda. But as I said, it's, most tax stabilization funds are not designed for something that we know now is going to likely recur, not will, but likely recur. So thank you, thank you for the report. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Morphy?
Thank you, Your Worship, through you. Just a question, if we do receive any funding from the province towards, you know, recovery of the money spent, will we dial this number back or will it stay?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to Counselor Morphy. So the report, it already includes the eligible cost for the, for that storm event. So when we see, when we got that, that funding from the province, that will not be going against our operating budget. It's already factored in. Yes.
Counsel, any other questions? I had the same question as Counselor Morphy, and I got a note back, and I said, you couldn't even break it to me gently. It was just, nope. That was the answer I got. So I appreciate, you know, the hard work that goes into this and, and, you know, and I'm going to say, I'm going to admit, not a fault of mine, but something, I've often wondered why, you know, we sometimes don't give that surplus back, but now I know. You know, it's, it's, it went to a good place, so I haven't 100% always agreed with that, but I do now. So good thing we had it. So thank you very much. And again, we keep bringing this up, but our Treasurer came in right at the beginning of this, and he's still helping clean us up. So thank you very much for the report, and we appreciate everything that you and your team do. So thank you. Okay, so we do have a vote here, I believe. And that carries. Thank you. Emergency funding, report number FIN 2025-12. Whereas the town of Gravenhurst has eligible costs directly linked to the March 2025 ice storm, the Council of the Town of Gravenhurst hereby requests assistance under the Municipal Ice Storm Assistance Program. Therefore be it resolved that report number FIN 2025-12, RE Emergency Funding Report be received for information, and that the Director of Financial Services Treasurer, in consultation with the Chief Administration Officer, be given delegated authority to verify and attest to the accuracy of the application package, and that the Director of Financial Services Treasurer finalize and submit the claim once costs have been fully quantified. And finally, that the administration report back to committee with the final claim details and outcome. Mr. Treasurer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All right, so I'll be very brief again. So this report is intended to, you know, bring to counsel, we are basically in the process of looking at submitting, preparing a claim package for costs related to the, the March 2025 ice storm. So the difference with this one is that instead of going through the EMDRA program, as was done with the snowstorm in December, we'll be going through a program called MISA. So that's, that's the one we're looking at now. Now, the difference, unlike the EMDRA, the MISA program, there's no cost threshold to be eligible. You just apply, I mean, for the one before, the EMDRA, you had to, there's a three, there was a threshold that we had to meet, but for this one, there is no cost threshold to qualify. And it's a more cost shared, the cost sharing formula is more favorable in that it provides a more, we, the province will give 75 to 95% of the eligible cost. So we, just to highlight a few of the key deadlines, July 28th, we are, if we intend to apply, we have to submit an expression of interest survey by July 28th, and the final application is due on October 31st. So we are still trying to quantify the final number for that October figure. But for the July 28th, we're only required to submit a ballpark, an estimate of what we think the cost will be. So this gives us some more time to identify additional extraordinary costs that will help us to sort of mitigate the impact on our 2025 budget. So just bringing this to counsel for us to get the approval to prepare and submit the claim, and we expect, with the expectation to come back later, later this year with our final claim cost.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Counsel, any questions? Or Director? Okay, thank you for that, and we'll look forward to hearing that final, final figure. So do you have a question to be answered in a vote, please? And that carries. Thank you. It's moved by Counsel Karen, second by Counselor Hunter. Be it resolved that report number LEG 2025-04, RE Appointment of an Interim Integrity Commissioner be received for information, and that Eardan Burless be appointed as the interim Town of Gravenhurst Integrity Commissioner, fulfilling all statutory requirements pursuant to Section 223.3 and 223.8 of the Municipal Act. And finally, that the clerk be delegated authority to enter into an agreement with Eardan Burless for integrity commissioner services. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, through the Mayor, to counsel. As counsel is aware, the town's appointed integrity commissioner submitted a letter of resignation. Municipalities since 2018 are required to have this appointed position. So in the absence of an integrity commissioner, seek out services for an interim IC to fulfill the role until the town can proceed through our regular procurement processes, public procurement process, tendering and RFP and evaluation. Eardan Burless is identified through their municipal accountability group, can support us in this time until a position is filled formally. And again, the position is an interim position to support counsel, community, until a formal appointment is made, formal permanent appointment is made. Thank you.
Counselor Strength? We're talking about appointing an interim integrity commissioner?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you, to the clerk. So is this an interim position from now until six months out of the election? Because it's my understanding that we don't need one prior to the, six months prior to the election. So is, are we just, are we signing the agreement from now until whatever that date is, May, next year?
Thank you. There's a couple acts best to that. The interim, there's not a defined definition. It's just to understand counsel's sort of wish for this interim appointment, as well as how much time it takes to, to seek a formal RFP process. It usually takes a few months, but it depends on workload and responses, et cetera. In regard to needing an integrity commissioner six months prior to the election, you need to have an integrity commissioner at all times. The commissioners usually will not accept formal complaints by the end of the last six months of a term. However, counsel are still sitting members of counsel until November 14th, 2026, and you will have counsel meetings, and you will have questions, and for if your own conflict with matters and education and those sorts of things are also part of the integrity commissioner's portfolio as required in the Municipal Act. So services will still be required. It's just a matter of integrity commissioner will not receive complaints formally at a certain point in time.
Counselor Varney?
Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. I do want to say I'm sorry to see Suzanne leave because I really appreciated her job, but I also wanted to know, is it Eardan Burless that makes the decision as to who the integrity officer will be, or is it counsel or senior staff? Thank you.
Through the Mayor, to Counselor Varney and all of counsel. By appointing Eardan Burless as a firm versus an individual, there is a group of five lawyers and associates within that program and a vetting process. If there is a complaint received, there will be sort of an intake officer to review, validate, and assign within the team for various processes, whether workload availability, the topic, whose expertise, et cetera. So there is not one contact for public inquiries and code complaint submissions. If counsel adopts it, there will be a designated contact for counsel for their own needs for conflict inquiries on matters, general education, and those sorts of questions, and a, and a direct contact will be provided to counsel. If you go this way, the public facing will have a different flow, and that will be on our website for those sorts of questions and processes.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. Great. So I will call So, I will call the question. All in favor? Okay. Great. So, I do believe we have a guest for our next presentation or for our next section of the meeting. Before I introduce them, I will just read the resolution. It is moved by Counsel Johnston, second by Counsel Jorgensen. Be it resolved that report number DEV 2025-46, RE Community Grants Committee mid-year update be received for information, and that the committee approve the recommended revisions to the following policies. Terrence Haight Financial Assistance Program, highlighted in attachment A. Community Improvement Program Policy, highlighted in attachment B. And Community Improvement Plan, highlighted in attachment C. And with that, I will invite the Chair of the Grants Committee, Mr. Jeff Watson, stranger to none, I think, around this table, to come on up and outline some of the changes and what's been going on with that committee. So.
Thank you, Your Worship. Pleasure to be here and seeing all familiar faces. I remember the last time I was here, and I kind of made the joke that you only have 44 months to go. And being retired, I wasn't able to get back to some of the council meetings. And now I get to say it's only 14 months left to go. So, congratulations to all of you for a job well done. So, as far as the committee and some of the things that we have discussed, and I just want to talk about it at a high level. The Terrence Haight policy, we're looking for stronger language around the town recognition by recipients, and the language strengthening the agreement terms and conditions. We're also asking for a new timeline to be around December 15th. The CIP policy, again, the new deadline of December 15th. And we're also looking at housekeeping language around those timelines. And the CIP plan, we're looking for a name change from Downtown of Tomorrow Grant to Commercial Safety and Technology Grant. And there's been a lot of conversation amongst the committee. And I'm going to introduce my committee to you, although most of them aren't here. In regards to, the CIP is no longer a downtown grant. It is now expanded to Bethune, down Winewood, and out Bethune. So, to name it as a downtown, it really is a misnomer. The, the idea that we're looking for is the future considerations to bring in two intake periods to assist with project completion. We're finding that some of the organizations and businesses that have asked for money are too rushed at the time that we're looking for the actual applications to come in. So, if we don't get all the applications, we're looking at a second set of timelines to receive more applications. And we're also looking at trying to clean up some of the work that was guaranteed to be done during their application and at the time of the applicant. We want to make sure they get it done. But if they don't, we're looking at timelines to allow them to be able to get it within that fiscal period. And we're looking at real allocating monies to other projects. And Amy will be here to assist with any questions going forward. I think it's important for me to thank the staff. Alan Selby, Jennifer Brockett, Rob Rosales, and of course, our legal consultant Jonathan at the back there where he keeps us coordinated. But it's, it's very important to recognize Amy Taylor, who's been the heart and soul of this committee and has been in touch with the applicants and speaks with them on a regular basis. And she knows the pulse of this community better than anybody and knows what, you know, she can do to help facilitate things. As far as my, as our committee, the towns committee, Cameron Smith, Heidi Welker, Kelsey Glidden, and of course, our council rep, Joe Morphy. And they've worked tirelessly to help facilitate the applications. So, this year, for the Terrence Haight Committee, we had $180,000 worth of ask. So, it seems like a lot. It is a lot. It really is a lot. And we have $30,000 to award to $180,000 worth of ask. We feel, it's very difficult to look at these applications and say, who gets it and who doesn't? We really try hard to focus on who in the community is going to touch the largest portion of the monies. So, the biggest impact on the largest groups. One of the things we run into is repeat applications. And it's very difficult to say no because they're all worthy. They're all people that is expected. And I know, Your Worship, Deputy Mayor, have sat on this committee. And you both know how hard it is. My, and Mr. Rosales has done a marvelous job in taking that money and investing and getting us interest and making the account grow. So, I would like to see counsel take the opportunity to discuss an increase in funding from that Terrence Haight money. I had the privilege of sitting on counsel when we received the money. And three of you, four of you in this room were part of it. And we said that money was to go into the community. And councils over the years have done an excellent job in doing that, although, as like everything, everything goes up. Things are more expensive. There's groups that don't have the ability to fundraise. There's other groups in town that fundraise, and they're like a juggernaut. They can fundraise and do all the things that they need to do. But there's other groups, and I'm not going to name groups, but there's other groups that do a marvelous job, maybe with a little bit smaller touch as far as the money goes. But they don't have the fundraising ability. So, on behalf of the committee, I would like to ask counsel, consider an additional $20,000 to the budget for 2025 going forward, if that's possible. There is no burden to the taxpayer. It all goes to designated groups within the community. And it would be greatly appreciated from those users who do apply. And staff have done an excellent job on advertising this fund and getting people to apply for this fund. And there's a lot of work that's gone into it. So, every little bit will help. And Your Worship, I think that's all I have. And as far as fundraising goes, it would be remiss if I didn't mention tomorrow is Camp Day. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And thanks for, we all know that Mr. Watson was the Tim Hortons owner in town for several years and participated and was very generous with these programs within our town. So, thank you. They help a lot of people. So, go to Camp Day if you can get a coffee tomorrow. Get a coffee. We appreciate you coming, Mr. Watson. I would, you know, I would say that this is a discussion that should come to counsel. And our treasurer and Mr. Rosilius were here to hear the ask. So, I suspect that it will come up at budget time and sort of see what that looks like, what it looks like for the principal to be depleted if it needs to be or, you know, to get to that 50,000 mark. I think that's what the ask is, is to bump it up to 50. So, if it doesn't get captured by the interest made on the reserve. So, counsel, are there any questions for the council rep or for the Chair of the committee? Counsel Morphy, did you have anything to add as the council rep? No? Great. Okay. So, with that. Counsel Morphy?
That the name change we're asking is from Downtown of Tomorrow to the Commercial Safety and Technology Grant. I don't know if that was captured.
Yep. I think, yeah, and I think that makes, I think it makes it a little more clear as to what that means, so, for people just looking at it. Okay. So, if there's no questions for staff or the committee, I'll call the question. That carries. Thank you very much. Okay. So, actually, we're going to take a, it's 4 o'clock. We're going to take a, let's say till 4:05. I have 3:57 here. So, let's, eight minutes, seven minutes? See you back here at 4:05. Okay, welcome back. Thank you. Okay, welcome back. Thank you. Quick break. Quick break. Quick break. Moving right along, it's moved by Council Morphy, second by Council Robinson, be it Moving right along, it's moved by Council Morphy, second by Council Robinson, be it Moving right along, it's moved by Council Morphy, second by Council Robinson, be it resolved that report number RAC 2025-05, RE amendment to the fee reduction schedule be resolved that report number RAC 2025-05, RE amendment to the fee reduction schedule be resolved that report number RAC 2025-05, RE amendment to the fee reduction schedule be received for information, and that Schedule I, Section G of Bylaw Number 2024-88, 2025 received for information, and that Schedule I, Section G of Bylaw Number 2024-88, 2025 received for information, and that Schedule I, Section G of Bylaw Number 2024-88, 2025 user fees and charges be amended per the recommendations contained in this report. user fees and charges be amended per the recommendations contained in this report. user fees and charges be amended per the recommendations contained in this report. Director Patterson? Director Patterson? Director Patterson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. So, the purpose of this report is to bring Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. So, the purpose of this report is to bring Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. So, the purpose of this report is to bring forward some proposed amended changes to the current fee reduction schedule as it relates forward some proposed amended changes to the current fee reduction schedule as it relates forward some proposed amended changes to the current fee reduction schedule as it relates to our local schools. So, throughout last summer and leading into 2025, there are some to our local schools. So, throughout last summer and leading into 2025, there are some to our local schools. So, throughout last summer and leading into 2025, there are some gray areas that the schools have brought forward within the current fee reduction gray areas that the schools have brought forward within the current fee reduction gray areas that the schools have brought forward within the current fee reduction schedule that limit or aren't very clear on what the schools are eligible for. So, schedule that limit or aren't very clear on what the schools are eligible for. So, schedule that limit or aren't very clear on what the schools are eligible for. So, in my meeting with Ms. McPherson at GHS, she brought forward some suggestions that in my meeting with Ms. McPherson at GHS, she brought forward some suggestions that in my meeting with Ms. McPherson at GHS, she brought forward some suggestions that kind kind of made sense to help clarify what is currently in the user fee reduction schedule kind of made sense to help clarify what is currently in the user fee reduction schedule of made sense to help clarify what is currently in the user fee reduction schedule for the for the school specifically. So, in the youth category of the fee reduction where they for the school specifically. So, in the youth category of the fee reduction where they school specifically. So, in the youth category of the fee reduction where they get 25% off get 25% off the fee, it says specifically for school electives, so that would be their get 25% off the fee, it says specifically for school electives, so that would be their the fee, it says specifically for school electives, so that would be their skating skating programs, their hockey, those types of things. And then they use our facilities skating programs, their hockey, those types of things. And then they use our facilities programs, their hockey, those types of things. And then they use our facilities for additional for additional purposes such as their GHS concert on the barge, they've used our auditorium for additional purposes such as their GHS concert on the barge, they've used our auditorium purposes such as their GHS concert on the barge, they've used our auditorium for prom, for prom, for dances, they do some picnics in the park, and there's nowhere that really for prom, for dances, they do some picnics in the park, and there's nowhere that really for dances, they do some picnics in the park, and there's nowhere that really categorizes categorizes a fee for that that kind of envelops the school use. So, in speaking with Ms. McPherson, categorizes a fee for that that kind of envelops the school use. So, in speaking with Ms. McPherson, a fee for that that kind of envelops the school use. So, in speaking with Ms. McPherson, I proposed a couple of changes to the fee reduction schedule that would be applicable I proposed a couple of changes to the fee reduction schedule that would be applicable I proposed a couple of changes to the fee reduction schedule that would be applicable to all schools in the community. The first one being a new reduction of 50% of the fee to all schools in the community. The first one being a new reduction of 50% of the fee to all schools in the community. The first one being a new reduction of 50% of the fee for schools for their own uses within town facilities, for picnics, for their concert for schools for their own uses within town facilities, for picnics, for their concert for schools for their own uses within town facilities, for picnics, for their concert in the park, for proms, et cetera. The 75% would remain applicable to their electives in the park, for proms, et cetera. The 75% would remain applicable to their electives in the park, for proms, et cetera. The 75% would remain applicable to their electives because we have a lot of youth that utilize that category in the community, and I wouldn't because we have a lot of youth that utilize that category in the community, and I wouldn't because we have a lot of youth that utilize that category in the community, and I wouldn't want to reduce that overall for every user that category falls into. And then the second want to reduce that overall for every user that category falls into. And then the second want to reduce that overall for every user that category falls into. And then the second amendment would be changing, essentially expanding or clarifying the definition within amendment would be changing, essentially expanding or clarifying the definition within amendment would be changing, essentially expanding or clarifying the definition within local reinvestment for what the schools could raise funds for, what that could be applicable local reinvestment for what the schools could raise funds for, what that could be applicable local reinvestment for what the schools could raise funds for, what that could be applicable to. So, clarifying that if they're doing a fundraiser to raise funds for equipment to. So, clarifying that if they're doing a fundraiser to raise funds for equipment to. So, clarifying that if they're doing a fundraiser to raise funds for equipment for the school, musical instruments, something that will be able to be used by all the youth for the school, musical instruments, something that will be able to be used by all the youth for the school, musical instruments, something that will be able to be used by all the youth that attend our local schools, and they could get that community reduction fee. So, it's that attend our local schools, and they could get that community reduction fee. So, it's that attend our local schools, and they could get that community reduction fee. So, it's a little clearer for the schools. So, what I have proposed is within the report. There a little clearer for the schools. So, what I have proposed is within the report. There a little clearer for the schools. So, what I have proposed is within the report. There really isn't a lot of financial impact. I think it'll benefit more than anything because really isn't a lot of financial impact. I think it'll benefit more than anything because really isn't a lot of financial impact. I think it'll benefit more than anything because of the uncertainty. They're not using our facilities, I think, as much as they could. of the uncertainty. They're not using our facilities, I think, as much as they could. of the uncertainty. They're not using our facilities, I think, as much as they could. And to bring greater clarity for ease of use for other schools as well, because Beechgrove And to bring greater clarity for ease of use for other schools as well, because Beechgrove And to bring greater clarity for ease of use for other schools as well, because Beechgrove and GPS both use facilities in our town as well. So, I'm proposing the amendment. There and GPS both use facilities in our town as well. So, I'm proposing the amendment. There and GPS both use facilities in our town as well. So, I'm proposing the amendment. There is a bylaw with it. If it goes through, the amendment will be applicable immediately is a bylaw with it. If it goes through, the amendment will be applicable immediately is a bylaw with it. If it goes through, the amendment will be applicable immediately for the remainder of 2025 and going into 20 future years. And the reason I'm bringing for the remainder of 2025 and going into 20 future years. And the reason I'm bringing for the remainder of 2025 and going into 20 future years. And the reason I'm bringing it forward at this time is because I wanted to have changes in place, if approved, for it forward at this time is because I wanted to have changes in place, if approved, for it forward at this time is because I wanted to have changes in place, if approved, for the school year starting in September. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer. the school year starting in September. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer. the school year starting in September. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay. 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 Council Cairns? Council Cairns? Council Cairns?
Thank you, worship through you. Ms. Patterson, does this include boys and girls Thank you, worship through you. Ms. Patterson, does this include boys and girls' Thank you, worship through you. Ms. Patterson, does this include boys and girls' hockey games in the afternoons? Are they going to be included in the fee reduction? You hockey games in the afternoons? Are they going to be included in the fee reduction? You hockey games in the afternoons? Are they going to be included in the fee reduction? You said 75% for electives, but does that include the hockey that the kids, the girls and the said 75% for electives, but does that include the hockey that the kids, the girls and the said 75% for electives, but does that include the hockey that the kids, the girls and the boys from the high school use? boys from the high school use? boys from the high school use?
Yep, through you, through Madam Mayor, to Council Cairns, yes. So, the school electives Yep, through you, through Madam Mayor, to Council Cairns, yes. So, the school electives Yep, through you, through Madam Mayor, to Council Cairns, yes. So, the school electives will remain at the 75% of the fee, per the agreement with the schools. That's what will remain at the 75% of the fee, per the agreement with the schools. That's what will remain at the 75% of the fee, per the agreement with the schools. That's what they determined would be fair because multiple users use that fee. So, to change that fee they determined would be fair because multiple users use that fee. So, to change that fee they determined would be fair because multiple users use that fee. So, to change that fee for the school, it would impact all of our users. So, they're gonna remain with their for the school, it would impact all of our users. So, they're gonna remain with their for the school, it would impact all of our users. So, they're gonna remain with their school electives at the 75% of the fee. school electives at the 75% of the fee. school electives at the 75% of the fee.
So, if I may, they pay how much for their ice rental and for one hour, or for, say, So, if I may, they pay how much for their ice rental and for one hour, or for, say, So, if I may, they pay how much for their ice rental and for one hour, or for, say, a two-hour game? So, they have a boys' game in the afternoon and a female game if they a two-hour game? So, they have a boys' game in the afternoon and a female game if they a two-hour game? So, they have a boys' game in the afternoon and a female game if they can schedule it in? I know that there's busing problems because they actually have to play can schedule it in? I know that there's busing problems because they actually have to play can schedule it in? I know that there's busing problems because they actually have to play too late, so they can't usually use a bus, so they can't bring in a lot of teams? too late, so they can't usually use a bus, so they can't bring in a lot of teams? too late, so they can't usually use a bus, so they can't bring in a lot of teams?
So, just to clarify, their games are all scheduled starting at noon, so buses are So, just to clarify, their games are all scheduled starting at noon, so buses are So, just to clarify, their games are all scheduled starting at noon, so buses are able to attend from other schools, so there's no issues there. And the fee, I don't know able to attend from other schools, so there's no issues there. And the fee, I don't know able to attend from other schools, so there's no issues there. And the fee, I don't know off the top of my head, I think it's $89 an hour for a regular fee, so they would have off the top of my head, I think it's $89 an hour for a regular fee, so they would have off the top of my head, I think it's $89 an hour for a regular fee, so they would have to pay 75% of whatever that is, so it's 70 bucks an hour, plus their insurance. to pay 75% of whatever that is, so it's 70 bucks an hour, plus their insurance. to pay 75% of whatever that is, so it's 70 bucks an hour, plus their insurance.
Council Morphy? Council Morphy? Council Morphy?
Thank you, worship through you. We're just talking about proms and picnics and Thank you, worship through you. We're just talking about proms and picnics and Thank you, worship through you. We're just talking about proms and picnics and things like that, right? The new 50%. Can you tell me how much revenue that generates, things like that, right? The new 50%. Can you tell me how much revenue that generates, things like that, right? The new 50%. Can you tell me how much revenue that generates, and if there's any, you know, appetite just to waive the fee altogether? and if there's any, you know, appetite just to waive the fee altogether? and if there's any, you know, appetite just to waive the fee altogether?
Through Madam Mayor, to Councilor Morphy. I don't particularly want to waive the fee Through Madam Mayor, to Councilor Morphy. I don't particularly want to waive the fee Through Madam Mayor, to Councilor Morphy. I don't particularly want to waive the fee because we kind of work back and forth. So, the schools do stuff for us as well where because we kind of work back and forth. So, the schools do stuff for us as well where because we kind of work back and forth. So, the schools do stuff for us as well where we're paying them. For instance, when they're catering any of our events, so they do things we're paying them. For instance, when they're catering any of our events, so they do things we're paying them. For instance, when they're catering any of our events, so they do things where we're paying them. So, it's kind of a back-and-forth agreement. So, we're bringing where we're paying them. So, it's kind of a back-and-forth agreement. So, we're bringing where we're paying them. So, it's kind of a back-and-forth agreement. So, we're bringing in, it depends on the rental, so the TFA is more expensive than the park, per se, in, it depends on the rental, so the TFA is more expensive than the park, per se, in, it depends on the rental, so the TFA is more expensive than the park, per se, probably five or 600 bucks a year right now. That's not including the ice time, so the probably five or 600 bucks a year right now. That's not including the ice time, so the probably five or 600 bucks a year right now. That's not including the ice time, so the ice time would be more. It'd be over, probably with the ice time, over $3,000 or $4,000 a ice time would be more. It'd be over, probably with the ice time, over $3,000 or $4,000 a ice time would be more. It'd be over, probably with the ice time, over $3,000 or $4,000 a year. year. year.
Okay, but just to be clear, there, you've talked to them about this, and they're Okay, but just to be clear, there, you've talked to them about this, and they're Okay, but just to be clear, there, you've talked to them about this, and they're fine with the fees that are being proposed? fine with the fees that are being proposed? fine with the fees that are being proposed?
They don't want the fees waived. They're just looking for a clear clarity, consistency, They don't want the fees waived. They're just looking for a clear clarity, consistency, They don't want the fees waived. They're just looking for a clear clarity, consistency, so there isn't questions. They have budget to use our spaces. They don't want the fees so there isn't questions. They have budget to use our spaces. They don't want the fees so there isn't questions. They have budget to use our spaces. They don't want the fees waived, but this is the, what they've proposed as an agreement. waived, but this is the, what they've proposed as an agreement. waived, but this is the, what they've proposed as an agreement.
Okay, thank you. That's not what they're asking for. Okay, thank you. That's not what they're asking for. Okay, thank you. Okay, before I go back to Council Cairns, anybody else? Okay, before I go back to Council Cairns, anybody else? Okay, before I go back to Council Cairns, anybody else? Okay, Council Cairns? Okay, Council Cairns? Okay, Council Cairns?
Thank you, and through you. So, this is really hard for me because 75% for electives, Thank you, and through you. So, this is really hard for me because 75% for electives, Thank you, and through you. So, this is really hard for me because 75% for electives, 75% is what they would pay for their hockey. The youth, girls' hockey can hardly field 75% is what they would pay for their hockey. The youth, girls' hockey can hardly field 75% is what they would pay for their hockey. The youth, girls' hockey can hardly field the team. They don't have money to clothe, dress the uniforms, the hockey gear for a the team. They don't have money to clothe, dress the uniforms, the hockey gear for a the team. They don't have money to clothe, dress the uniforms, the hockey gear for a lot of the youth that play on the girls' team. And so, it's very expensive. But we lot of the youth that play on the girls' team. And so, it's very expensive. But we lot of the youth that play on the girls' team. And so, it's very expensive. But we want to encourage our youth, we want to encourage our community to use our recreation facilities want to encourage our youth, we want to encourage our community to use our recreation facilities want to encourage our youth, we want to encourage our community to use our recreation facilities as much as possible. And by using it, I mean, I would like to see the school pay 25%. The as much as possible. And by using it, I mean, I would like to see the school pay 25%. The as much as possible. And by using it, I mean, I would like to see the school pay 25%. The lights are on, the staff are in the building, why are they having to pay? And I may have lights are on, the staff are in the building, why are they having to pay? And I may have lights are on, the staff are in the building, why are they having to pay? And I may have not misunderstood, I mean, I have misunderstood this because I don't believe that they're not misunderstood, I mean, I have misunderstood this because I don't believe that they're not misunderstood, I mean, I have misunderstood this because I don't believe that they're all in agreeance to this. I understand that it is extremely difficult for a lot of the all in agreeance to this. I understand that it is extremely difficult for a lot of the all in agreeance to this. I understand that it is extremely difficult for a lot of the youth to participate in any of the programs that are provided by the town because the youth to participate in any of the programs that are provided by the town because the youth to participate in any of the programs that are provided by the town because the cost is too much. The hockey is one example. We've had huge problems, and they're trying cost is too much. The hockey is one example. We've had huge problems, and they're trying cost is too much. The hockey is one example. We've had huge problems, and they're trying to arrange times to be able to play hockey, and that, it makes it very difficult for to arrange times to be able to play hockey, and that, it makes it very difficult for to arrange times to be able to play hockey, and that, it makes it very difficult for the kids because there is on some days that they have games, and Ms. Patterson, you said the kids because there is on some days that they have games, and Ms. Patterson, you said the kids because there is on some days that they have games, and Ms. Patterson, you said that they have the ice from 12 o'clock, but I also understand that there's some public that they have the ice from 12 o'clock, but I also understand that there's some public that they have the ice from 12 o'clock, but I also understand that there's some public skating that interferes with some of them. So, the buses are a problem because they'd skating that interferes with some of them. So, the buses are a problem because they'd skating that interferes with some of them. So, the buses are a problem because they'd like to have both. like to have both. like to have both.
Council Cairns, I'm gonna actually cut down this line of questioning to our director Council Cairns, I'm gonna actually cut down this line of questioning to our director Council Cairns, I'm gonna actually cut down this line of questioning to our director because our director knows more than anyone what's going on in this building. And if because our director knows more than anyone what's going on in this building. And if because our director knows more than anyone what's going on in this building. And if we have overlapping programs, that's a staff's job to organize that. You're making assumptions we have overlapping programs, that's a staff's job to organize that. You're making assumptions we have overlapping programs, that's a staff's job to organize that. You're making assumptions that we don't have a representative from the school here. If they didn't agree with that we don't have a representative from the school here. If they didn't agree with that we don't have a representative from the school here. If they didn't agree with this policy change, they would have reached out to us directly. Staff have consulted with this policy change, they would have reached out to us directly. Staff have consulted with this policy change, they would have reached out to us directly. Staff have consulted with the school contact, and, you know, we're going to take our staff's recommendation. They're the school contact, and, you know, we're going to take our staff's recommendation. They're the school contact, and, you know, we're going to take our staff's recommendation. They're not asking for the fees to be waived. They've come to this, they've come to an agreement not asking for the fees to be waived. They've come to this, they've come to an agreement not asking for the fees to be waived. They've come to this, they've come to an agreement that this works for both parties. So, I don't, I'm sorry, but I can't allow you to continue that this works for both parties. So, I don't, I'm sorry, but I can't allow you to continue that this works for both parties. So, I don't, I'm sorry, but I can't allow you to continue to agree that the, we're not consulting with the party who's asked for this request. to agree that the, we're not consulting with the party who's asked for this request. to agree that the, we're not consulting with the party who's asked for this request. Okay, Director? Okay, Director? Okay, Director?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I just want to be clear. The report, as I wrote it with Thanks, Madam Mayor. I just want to be clear. The report, as I wrote it with Thanks, Madam Mayor. I just want to be clear. The report, as I wrote it with the amendment changes, was sent to the person I was in contact with. It was passed around the amendment changes, was sent to the person I was in contact with. It was passed around the amendment changes, was sent to the person I was in contact with. It was passed around to their colleagues, and email was provided back to me saying, "This is perfect. This to their colleagues, and email was provided back to me saying, "This is perfect. This to their colleagues, and email was provided back to me saying, "This is perfect. This is exactly what we spoke about." So, just to be clear, we are in complete agreement is exactly what we spoke about." So, just to be clear, we are in complete agreement is exactly what we spoke about." So, just to be clear, we are in complete agreement with the school, so I just want to be clear on that. with the school, so I just want to be clear on that. with the school, so I just want to be clear on that.
Okay, thank you. Council Varney? Okay, thank you. Council Varney? Okay, thank you. Council Varney?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I just want to agree with Director because Counselor Through you, Madam Mayor. I just want to agree with Director because Counselor Through you, Madam Mayor. I just want to agree with Director because Counselor Hunter and I did speak with the teacher, and this is exactly what they were asking Hunter and I did speak with the teacher, and this is exactly what they were asking Hunter and I did speak with the teacher, and this is exactly what they were asking for, so, thank you. for, so, thank you. for, so, thank you.
Okay. 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 Council, is there any more questions for Counselor, I mean, for Director Patterson? Council, is there any more questions for Counselor, I mean, for Director Patterson? Council, is there any more questions for Counselor, I mean, for Director Patterson? Okay, well, I want to thank you for consulting with the school with the, you know, I'm gonna Okay, well, I want to thank you for consulting with the school with the, you know, I'm gonna Okay, well, I want to thank you for consulting with the school with the, you know, I'm gonna own it. I take great pride in the consultation that our staff do with members of the public. own it. I take great pride in the consultation that our staff do with members of the public. own it. I take great pride in the consultation that our staff do with members of the public. We had another great example of that at this evening's deputation stage where our staff, We had another great example of that at this evening's deputation stage where our staff, We had another great example of that at this evening's deputation stage where our staff, you know, came to an agreement with members of the public who are looking to have a problem you know, came to an agreement with members of the public who are looking to have a problem you know, came to an agreement with members of the public who are looking to have a problem to be solved. We also had, this is a perfect example, where we heard there was a problem to be solved. We also had, this is a perfect example, where we heard there was a problem to be solved. We also had, this is a perfect example, where we heard there was a problem with the public with fee charges. We all came to agreement, and it was brought to with the public with fee charges. We all came to agreement, and it was brought to with the public with fee charges. We all came to agreement, and it was brought to this table, and, you know, I don't think that we should be taking up an argument when this table, and, you know, I don't think that we should be taking up an argument when this table, and, you know, I don't think that we should be taking up an argument when the problem has been solved. The problem was solved. We were looking to solve a problem. the problem has been solved. The problem was solved. We were looking to solve a problem. the problem has been solved. The problem was solved. We were looking to solve a problem. The problem was solved, and I disagree with the recommendations that the counselor was The problem was solved, and I disagree with the recommendations that the counselor was The problem was solved, and I disagree with the recommendations that the counselor was making. So, I'll be very clear with that. I thought that we had come to a great resolution, making. So, I'll be very clear with that. I thought that we had come to a great resolution, making. So, I'll be very clear with that. I thought that we had come to a great resolution, and so I support this 100%. So, anybody else? and so I support this 100%. So, anybody else? and so I support this 100%. So, anybody else? Okay, so I will call the question. Okay, so I will call the question. Okay, so I will call the question. And that carries. Thank you. I'm actually gonna take a five-minute break, so be back And that carries. Thank you. I'm actually gonna take a five-minute break, so be back And that carries. Thank you. I'm actually gonna take a five-minute break, so be back at 4:23. at 4:23. at 4:23.
I'm actually going to take a five-minute break, so be back at 4:23.
Okay, I think we're, are we already, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay, so, welcome back, everyone. Okay, so, we are sticking with recreation. Director Patterson, moved by Counselor Strength, second by Counselor Varney. Be it resolved that report number RAC 2025-06, RE Digitalization, or Digitat, I'm not, we're going to put everything digital, of Lions Sports Hall of Fame be received for information and that committee approves $8,000 to be transferred from the Lions Hall of Fame Reserve Fund to be used to purchase and install a digital screen, software, and wall wrap for the Hall of Fame. Director Patterson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this report is coming forward and working with the Community Awards Committee at Lions Hall of Fame as part of that committee. I brought forward the idea to have a digital Hall of Fame placed in the main lobby of the Centennial Center. The current Hall of Fame is on the second floor. It's a physical Hall of Fame. That would remain. However, the reason for bringing this forward is to allow more people to appreciate all of the athletes in our community. On the second floor, nobody is seeing that space unless, A, they're asking to go up there, B, they have to go up for a reason. So all of the foot traffic that goes through our facility, they don't get to see the awesomeness that our community has in an athlete perspective, as well as history. We have some really cool historical equipment and trophies and different things that could be on display in a digital form. So the committee approved the use of some of the Lions Reserve Fund to fund this project. And it would still allow a large remaining balance to continue to maintain the physical Hall of Fame, which we will still do and continue to rotate the displays through there. But at least then the digital portion allows more people to see it and interact with everything that we have. I'm going to leave it there. It's a pretty straightforward, easy concept and hopefully it gets approved.
Okay, Counselor, are there any questions for Director? I'm going to go to Counsel Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say that when Director Patterson brought this forward, I was really excited about it. I think it's going to be great addition. Like you said, you have to go upstairs to see all those amazing people and all the stuff they've done. And who goes up there? Nobody, really. So I think this is great and I'm all in favor of it.
Counselor Morphy?
Your Worship, thank you. My question, is it changeable? Like, can, do we need to hire someone or can somebody be operating the board and it's, okay?
Director?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, to Counselor Morphy. So the software that'll be installed will be managed by myself. So when the committee gets new information or wants to change display, I would just upload it to the software and it would get sent to the screen and everything would be operational.
Subsequent, Counselor?
Thank you. And will it be limited only to athletes or will it consider expanding to upcoming events just here and there and that sort of thing or no?
Through the mayor to Counselor Morphy. So the display that we have looked at does allow for the use to put community information on their events. I would have to speak with the committee because it is intended for a Hall of Fame. So if we want to add different things, it would have to be through that approval level of the committee. But it could also include Spirit Award nominees in the future. Yeah.
Counselor, are there any other questions? Okay, so, all in favor? So, let me just find my agenda here. Okay, updates from Counsel. Oh, pardon me, I'm sorry, yes. Forgive me, Counselor Johnson. We had something from Counselor Johnson and seconded by Counselor Hunter. Sorry, sorry. We should have done the paperwork on the break. Okay, there we go. Be it resolved that report number FIN 2025-09, RE 2024, annual reserve and reserve funds be received for information. Counselor Johnston, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. I see my name coming up on the agenda, so I will transition into my being brief mode. The comments that I wanted to make, for the most part, the key one, I've already made in regards to my comments to the Director of Treasury on the Tax Stabilization Fund. I think we need to, we need to, the current reason why we use that was necessary, but going forward, I think it's, we need to look at another source. I want to say that I went through the report on the reserves and by and large, I'd like to comment again, the Director and his team, our reserve and reserve funds are very well managed in this municipality. They are increased every year. Our external debt is going down every year. We're in good shape. However, the, this climate crisis, snowstorm highlighted an issue, which is that there are going to be other, other events that come up that we didn't see coming. They're called white swans. And so my comment to the Director and his team is that I think perhaps we should consider the, currently it's 3% increase to the reserves every year. I think perhaps, Director, you should at least consider increasing that to 4% to cover these sorts of things coming up. And my other comment was, again, just a question, given that, my earlier comment, Director Campbell, that unfortunately, these sorts of severe weather events are likely, I want to try and be optimistic, are likely to occur more often. Everything I read and my work on climate through the district says they are. And so my other comment, Director, is perhaps your team should, could look at something, some sort of funding other than tax stabilization to address climate crisis events like that that may come up again. That's all I wanted to say, Your Worship. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to speak to the reserves? Report, okay. I'll call the question. All in favor? Okay, and that carries, thank you. And we will go back to Counselor Johnson for his update on the watershed.
Thank you, Your Worship. People will get tired of hearing my voice. I will be brief on this. As you may recall, there was an IWM, that's Integrated Watershed Management, but in future, I'm only going to use those letters. When I say IWM, that's what I'm referring to. There was an IWM workshop in Huntsville last November and after which Gravenhurst volunteered to do workshop number two at a date somewhere in 2025 or perhaps early 2026. And we volunteered to co-host with the township of Muskoka Lakes. And we, that's now changed. I had a long meeting yesterday in Bracebridge with the IWM project team. And there was general consensus that, and then Peter Kelly was there and other members of IWM Pilot Project, general consensus that the IWM workshop that was being planned should not be. It's too close to the Summit on the Environment, which is going ahead, and a shout-out to that. That's going to be absolutely magnificent environmental event. The theme is, is living smarter with climate change. And the two were too close together, people were confused. So we concluded that what was needed was a plan to develop a governance body related to IWM. And we're going to start to, by that, with talking to some municipalities about perhaps appointing someone from Counsel who would sit on an initial meeting we would have sometime this fall to work out a plan to develop a governance plan for IWM. I just want to be clear that in the meantime, the IWM project team is continuing to meet regularly. We meet every week to gather the data, which will going to be incorporated into IWM. Part of that exercise will be public engagement and education regarding exactly what the Muskoka watershed is and where it's located and what the boundaries are. My last point, just to highlight that most people don't know this, the Muskoka watershed is actually the size of Prince Edward Island. That's how big it is. And it has a total shoreline distance of 6,800 kilometers. Many countries in Europe, we're talking inland, not coastal, many countries in Europe, France does not have 6,800 kilometers of shoreline. And also, this figure surprised a lot of people at the conference I was at. We have 2,000 lakes in our watershed. And it encompasses outside the district, but are either in part or whole part of the watershed, 25 municipalities. So that's my report for this month, Your Worship. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor, I'm up next and I, oh, Counselor Hunter, I apologize. It's not on the list. We added it, so go ahead, please.
That's okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to share with Counsel and the community that our latest art exhibit is now on display here at the municipal office. You can see them here, lovely paintings. On behalf of the Public Art Advisory Committee, I want to thank the Muskoka Discovery Center for sourcing the work that we are showing. Yay, you can see them. They're gorgeous. Our latest display features work by Frida Ambrosiak. Frida started painting eight years ago and is self-taught, which is pretty incredible. As you'll see, her paintings feature beautiful, detailed outdoor images. Frida's work can be seen in our lobby during regular business hours, Monday to Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and here in the council chambers when meetings are in session. Frida is a member of the Quest Art School and Gallery in Midland and is a member of the Berry Art Club. Her work is displayed regularly at their exhibitions and Frida also shows her work here in Gravenhurst at Muskoka Discovery Center. We're happy to have Frida as part of our ongoing art display here at the municipal office. This is our third artist that we have featured since launching this showcase earlier this year. A few weeks ago, some of you were in attendance here, we hosted an open house to celebrate this new program and so that we could connect with some other local artists as well. I want to thank everyone who joined us for that evening, as well as staff for their work organizing the event, specifically Haley Lehman and Mike Jennings, who did a fantastic job. Artists interested in participating in the showcase here at the municipal office should contact Wendy Fairbarn at Muskoka Discovery Center. Wendy has done a tremendous job finding artists for us and we're pleased to have her as part of this project. We will introduce a new artist in the coming months and I will be happy to give an update when that happens. So I'll just leave it there.
Well, thank you. I think it's a great project and they look really good in person. I mean, that was a pretty good shot, but they look great in person. So thank you for your update. So now, to me. So I don't have to tell members of Counsel that this is a very busy season. It's, summer is always hopping in Gravenhurst and there's not a weekend, I think, that goes by that there's not something happening in Gravenhurst. And so there's been lots of Lake Association meetings to attend and getting out and seeing some of the seasonal residents who we don't get to chat with very often. So that's a highlight of my summer. We had a very successful antique boat show last weekend. Lots of things coming up. We have Tall Pines coming this weekend and the weekend after that. We have Rib Fest. I want to thank staff, event staff, and, you know, park staff who get all of these areas ready. It's a lot of work to get these areas ready and looking beautiful for all the visitors. So thank you to all of them. A lot of coordination goes into all this. And a reminder that there is a Health Hub meeting tomorrow. If you want to find out more about the Health Hub, then you can go to the Opera House at 6:00. And some interesting conversation will happen there, I'm sure. And really, that's it. And have a great summer. Enjoy, enjoy the weather, stay cool, and go jump in the lake, maybe. Counselor Hunter, you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It was more of a comment, just when you talked about the event staff. I have had several positive comments about what Gull Lake Park looks like after events, the car show, farmers markets, how quickly it's cleaned up and how good the park looks. So I just wanted to pass that along to everybody.
Okay, Counselor Johnston?
Thank you, Your Worship. What a great segue. You've mentioned about how beautiful things are and so on and the various events. And as I mentioned earlier, excuse me, I spend several hours a day walking the wharf. And I made this comment to Director Stacy privately, but I want to publicly acknowledge, I mean, the, if you walk the wharf these days, the shrubbery, the landscaping is absolutely magnificent. I've never seen it look so beautiful. And I've talked to some of the staff and told them how much I am pleased with what they do because I've had so many people say that the wharf these days, the walk along the boardwalk, is magnificent. And people go down there and just because it's so beautiful to be around. So I just wanted to publicly commend Director Stacy and his staff or any other staff that have a part in doing that because it's very much appreciated by our residents. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay. All right, I guess that's the end of this meeting. So I'm going to call for adjournment. I'm going to adjourn committee of the whole, Counselor Robinson and Counselor Varney. And please vote. And we're going to roll right into Counsel. Okay, so, Counsel, we have already adopted the agenda because we did go into closed. And so... Are there any disclosures of cunary interest, Counsel? It's moved by Counsel Morphy, second by Counsel Robinson. Be it resolved that the council minutes from June 17, 2025 be adopted as circulated? Please vote. It's moved by Counsel Strength, second by Counsel Varney. Be it resolved that the committee of the whole minutes from June 17, 2025 be adopted as circulated? Please vote. And that carries, thank you. And it's moved by Counsel Robinson, second by Counsel Hunter. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read, passed, and engrossed into the bylaw book. Bylaw number 2025-48, amend Schedule A of administrative monetary penalty. Bylaw number 2022-103. Bylaw number 2025-49, to amend user fees and service charges by bylaw number 2024-88. And bylaw number 2025-50, execute land lease agreement, Muskoka mind and body. Any questions or comments on any of those, Counsel? Okay, all in favor? And that carries, thank you. And it is moved by Counsel Johnson, second by Counsel Jorgensen. Be it resolved that bylaw number 2025-51, to confirm the council meeting held on July 15, 2025, be passed. And I need a motion to adjourn Counsel Johnson and Counsel Hunter. And please vote. And that carries, thank you. Thanks, everyone.